Could you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we consider it a privilege to be able to acknowledge your presence in our lives and ask that you lead and guide us as we make decisions about the college and how we support the staff, the leadership, and all of the employees and students. We consider this a privilege to serve. We just ask that you guide our service so that it's never about us and it's all about them. Father, we thank you for every family represented here and we ask that we give you our very best during this meeting and all of our lives. These blessings we ask and receive in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I give up a more present in this meeting and members of the public may follow this meeting on one side. Now is not a privilege for members of the public to suggest additional topics in the session or to discuss topics of interest. Presentation will be three minutes. Does anyone present want their present to board? Senator, we'll move on to Admiral Green.
I don't have anything to update, sir. We'll move on to the presentations.
Chairman Weaver, board members, Chancellor Yiannopoulos, and audience guests, thank you for the continued opportunity to share the goodness that is our academic programs. We're pleased this morning, or this afternoon, to share with you two of our esteemed department chairs. First up is Mr. Rick Whitezel. He'll speak to you about the aviation science program here, and he'll be followed by Mr. John Chella with our protective services and all the programs under that umbrella. Thank you.
My name is Rick Whitezel, the department chair of aviation science program here at Central Texas College. The program that we offer is an associate applied science degree with sixty credit hours in that course. We offer all the way up through the commercial instrument certificate and students are able to, majority of our students are able to go on to A&amp;M Central Texas and complete a bachelor's degree. Some of the updates that I have for you today, or the enrollment numbers, I guess, are first thing here. The enrollment has, we've seen a little bit of drop. There's been some problems with aviation and during COVID time, there is still a great pilot shortage that's out there and we need people to come in, but what happened over COVID has made people kind of back up and look at maybe that job as a whole, and I think it's been affected a little bit in enrollments. I think we're going to see it go back up as we start traveling again. A lot of the things that I've seen is a big indicator that the industry is returning back to normal and we're going to see a lot more people interested and maybe getting back into that job. And I'm pretty sure we'll see enrollments start going back up. Some of the updates I have for you today, I'm announcing the department chair is retiring after twenty-seven years of full-time here at CTC. I actually started at CTC thirty-five years ago as a student, went through, earned my bachelor degree from University of Central Texas and worked as a part-time instructor, did that for about two and a half years. I stepped away from the school for about six months, worked at an airport down in Austin and then returned, worked about another year and a half in part-time status when I was hired full-time. I've been the department chair, or department chair for about three years now and then the chief flight instructor have fulfilled that role for about twenty-three years. And a long time as the chief flight instructor. The program's been in since nineteen sixty-seven, I guess, so it, I've been around for about thirty-five years. I'm going to miss this place, but I'm going to be leaving at the end of May. The other things we have going on, some of you know, we have our Piper Super Cub, that airplane was bought in late seventies and finished getting put together and we're going to offer through the continuing education program, a Tillwell endorsement course. Hopefully, it looks like we're going to be able to start around the first of June for that, actually, and the cost will, the students will receive about ten hours of flight time and about fifteen hundred dollars is the estimate right now for that. We have some other things that we're doing with the industry and schools. We are, last summer we did this and we've kind of expanded the program. We're working with Temple ISD in Region Twelve and offering what we call Learn to Fly High School Camps. So we have students that are going to be anywhere from sophomores to seniors in high school and they'll come in. We're going to put them through about a four-day program. They'll fly the simulators, they're going to actually get a flight in the aircraft as well, and we're going to do two different groups this year. So we're going to have the first and second week of June, high school students will be able to come into the program, and I think it's a great way not only to get those students interested, but for them to go back and tell others, other people about what they've experienced and hopefully get the word out about CTC and their aviation program. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Whitezel?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I should know probably, but why not Colleen High School?
Um, Colleen, we've, have done some things with them in the past. The Region Twelve Gear Up Program, we actually have done tours with Colleen. This Temple and those facilitators have just reached out about doing a camp for them. So, yeah, we, like I say, we'd be interested in expanding it as we go forward. It's a, it's a great program for the high school kids to learn about it and then, like I said, it's going to get the word out about the program as well.
Don't, don't take me wrong, I really appreciate Temple, but I was just wondering, Colleen's right here and, and we need to do something, not you, from your standpoint, but for the community.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, sounds good. Yes, ma'am.
What is required for a commercial, what, is there a degree or certification and/or something else? What are the requirements for a commercial pilot?
To first, to get into the program, you have to have at least a second-class FAA medical certificate, so there is a medical side of it about being, becoming a pilot, but then the commercial pilot is actually an FAA certification. So the students will go through our program and then they have to take a checkride with the FAA, either designated pilot examiner with the FAA to get their actual FAA certificate.
But there isn't like a four-year degree requirement or is just the two-year degree here and additional?
There's actually no requirement as far as the degree plan. Now, when we talk about going to work for an airline, the restricted ATP is something that you'll hear about in the industry, a pilot has to have an ATP to go to work for the airline. If they come through our program at twelve-hundred-and-fifty hours of flight time, they're able to go get that job versus having fifteen-hundred hours of flight time that they would normally have to have without the degree.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
That was remiss on my part by not first leading with, we appreciate your service and we're going to miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like I said, I'm going to miss this place.
What's the status of the three-ten?
The three-ten is, we need an engine for it now, so we're going through the process of getting bids to overhaul an engine. We went through a maintenance overhaul type thing, the annual inspection, and just recently that the aircraft was found that the crankshaft had some rust on it, and so we're going to need to get that overhauled and replace that engine before we can get that aircraft flying again.
So right now we can do no multi-engine, right?
That's correct. The multi-engine is not part of our degree plan, so as far as offering anything for the degree, we're not, we're not really out anything right now.
And you know, they often say, thank you for your service to military people, but in, in this case, I would say it would be very appropriate for an instructor or anyone that's teaching children or, or young adults for the future, so thank you for your service to us.
Thank you for that.
You have a question?
I just want to thank Rick for all the thirty-seven years. Now, did you start with Ralph Searle or was?
Yes, when I came in, I met with Ralph when I came up, did a tour, and then in eighty-seven, the fall of eighty-seven, when I started, is when that, that change started taking place and Mr. Gibson coming in, that type of thing, so.
Well, thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your service, sir. Thank you very much. It's been important for CTC to have you. One third and second.
I appreciate it. Like I said, I always tell people, one thing I wasn't going to do when I grew up was be a teacher. My family was in education and I wasn't going to do it, and as I, as I became a flight instructor and started working with students, I just absolutely fell in love with it and it was one of the reasons I stuck around for all the years. So, like I said, I've had a blast teaching and I just, I love working with the students, so thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Last item is Detective Services Department.
Thank you and good morning. Good to be back with you all. I think the last time I was here was twenty-nineteen. Time flew by and it's now my turn again to be up here at the podium. Today I'm going to give you a short briefing, not as short as what you just heard, but I'll try to keep it short, on the Protective Services Department, which includes criminal justice, corrections, fire, and not separate and apart, but in the other hallway of our building, the Police Academy. I think most of you have been up there to visit and you know what the Police Academy is about and you've seen them train here on the campus with their driving and you hear them shoot out of the range and that's all under my purview here as the department chair for Protective Services. I do want to say that all the classes that we offer here on the campus, and I'll go through the degree plans here just shortly, all the classes we offer, with the exception of the Police Academy, are offered online and face-to-face, so a student can get a degree whether they come on campus or not. You might think, well, why is that important? Well, when we had the pandemic come through and I know that impacted all of you, certainly impacted us as well when we had to shut down the campus and students were wondering where are they going to go now or what do they do? Because we had already had our degree plan online, all of our courses were online, it was pretty trans, it was pretty simple transition for the students to make that change. We snatched them out of the classroom, sent them home and said, hook up on the Zoom meeting, and fortunately we had that opportunity to do that and they did that very well, so that was a few bumps, but we got through all that. The degrees we offer are in criminal justice, corrections, and the, and the fire, and then in the Police Academy, that is where we do the actual law enforcement training and education hands-on, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. There's a good question and asked to Rick about the education for employment in aviation. Well, that applies and I will address that in Protective Services as well. You probably know that to become a police officer in Texas or a firefighter or correctional officer, there is no education requirement. You can come right out of high school. If you're twenty-one years of age, you can become a police officer. If you're eighteen years of age, you can become a correctional officer or a firefighter, and most people don't think about a degree in criminal justice until they're looking to get promoted or they're looking to make a bigger paycheck, and then that becomes important. The state did try to implement a mandatory training requirement for the state, for the state of Texas, that did not pass, that started in two thousand, in the year two thousand, that did not pass. So our degrees, you can see here, criminal justice degree, we have a AES degree, which is sixty hours. These are stackable degrees, as you can see on the slide there. We have a certificate of completion for CJ, CJ, which is thirty hours, so they can start with that, they can end with that, or they can take that and go on to the AES degree and complete that in sixty hours. That is a transferable degree. A lot of our students do go to Texas A&amp;M University, it's a transition right down the road, easy for them to do, and they can go over there and get their bachelor's degree. We also have a correction specialization. We have a degree in that, which is also sixty hours, an associate degree, and that can begin with a thirty-hour certificate of completion as well. So if they just want to get some knowledge of corrections before they go to work there, they can come in and take a few classes, get that certificate, go to work, and most of those come back and they get, they do finish the degree with the sixty hours. In the fire program, fire protection program, we have the twelve-hour certificate of completion and that ties directly in with the sixty-hour associate degree program that we have in Europe. And so, like I said, each of those is stackable, they can take any part of that, all of it or none of it, and they can take them on to the next level of education that they would like to take. Police Academy is a little bit different. The Police Academy is made up of four, five courses. You can see on there, police officer, one, two, three, four, and five. For that, they get twenty-four semester hours of college. And I normally talk about the Police Academy in contact hours rather than semester hours. Currently, we have six-hundred-and-ninety-six hours required by TECOL. TECOL is the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. They are the governing body for what we do here. They are the ones that come and inspect us, they are the ones that come and bring the hammer, and, you know, if you ever worked in business, nursing has the same type of guidance from the state, and we are updating our contact hours. It is currently, right now, about seven-hundred-and-fifty hours. Now, I just told you, six-hundred-and-ninety-six hours, that is required in the program, but we do things that are outside the program that we include, things like AS training, baton training, OC spray. You'll know what that is, you all been pepper sprayed ever? Nobody? Okay, you need to come up and visit us on that day we have pepper spray, I'll be glad to introduce you to it. And then we do PT as well. One of the complaints we've had from law enforcement agencies is that we, well, they bring us their cadets and then they think we're going to whip them into shape to become Joe Widder, but that doesn't happen, so we have included PT in there and we have a regimen that they do on the rowing machine. Have you all done the rowing machines? Okay, we have eleven of them now, thanks to the Perkins Grant, and if you would like to come up and try that and row, come on up, we got lots of, lots of rowing machines, just bring your Gatorade because you're going to need it. Now, in January of next year, we're going to have a curriculum change again, which is going to bring us up to nine-hundred hours in the Police Academy. And I don't really want to go into that other than to tell you that that is coming because that will probably create some, some issues, you know, with manpower, space, room, things like that. But don't let that bother you yet, we're not at that point yet. The courses that we teach at the Police Academy, there are actually forty-seven blocks of instruction that they must learn and pass, forty-seven topics. They range in length from one-hour blocks of instruction to seventy-two-hour blocks of instruction, so very, very broad, and the Police Academy doesn't just meet one or two days a week, it meets forty hours a week, four-ten-hour days, and they are there for the long haul. They get tested every day, every day. I don't know if you ever had a college class like that, where you had to take an exam every day, but we do that, and then we take them out, we give them PT, and then they go home and wonder, why did they sign up for that program? Some of the, I mentioned that their curriculum is changing and there's lots of reasons for that. One of those reasons is that we have to reflect what is going on in society, and if you watch the news, you know what's going on in society with the police. Police is a very difficult field to be in right now. We've gone through things like defunding the police, people don't like the police, people hate the police, people riot against the police, people, the police are not well-liked. So, part of our curriculum changes by TECOL will include things like more crisis intervention training, more mental health training, because you always hear on the news, why did the cops do that? Why didn't they call the mental health people to come and help? Well, we're looking at that approach now. The police have to be part of the community. Human trafficking on our south border, you know that's going on every day, every day. If you watched the news yesterday, you saw that human trafficking is now a big problem in Europe with the refugees that are leaving Ukraine. That's impacting us right here in the U.S. because human trafficking is worldwide. Some of the other blocks of instruction that we teach are things that you would normally think about, like police ethics, penal code, traffic code, DWI, arrest, search, and seizure, those things that you normally associate with police that you know. And I hope if you know any police that you know them for a good reason and not because they gave you a free ride to jail. All right, the next slide. Twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, as far as we could count, these are the enrollment numbers. You see back in fall of twenty-nineteen, we were pretty healthy, we were at nine-hundred-and-sixty enrollments for that semester. Now, this goes, fall, spring, summer, this way, so they go down, not across. So in the spring of twenty-twenty, we had eight-hundred-and-ten total. Summer of twenty-twenty, we had three-hundred-and-ninety-four. Now, summer normally is the lowest enrollment time, but you can see the trend there, eight-eighty-four in fall of twenty-twenty, seven-ten, again a dip, about a hundred enrollment difference between spring twenty-twenty and spring twenty-one. And now we're starting to see that pick up again. For example, spring of twenty-two, our spring two classes just started yesterday, and the enrollments, I could only count my own classes, so my enrollments are up this year, this semester in four classes, I've had a hundred-and-forty-five students, so the numbers are coming back, the numbers are looking better. In the Police Academy, if you look on the far right, far right, your left, you'll see the class names there called BPOC, Delta, Alpha, Bravo, and Charlie. Those are the designations we give. If you ever look at a schedule and see BPOC Alpha, that is a nighttime academy, that goes from January to December twelfth. It's just about a year-long program. Those students come in evenings and on weekends, they come about halftime of what the regular academies would come. We used to call that the X-BPOC, the extended BPOC, and then we have the three, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta, those are the three academies that we have during the daytime, that used to be called the BPOC program, so we now have designated them by numeric and alpha designation there. So you can see there a year from twenty-nineteen to twenty-two, like we just saw on the other slide, start dates and the number of students. Okay, so back in twenty-nineteen, we had twenty students, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then look at what happens. COVID came along, we went down to eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, thirteen, and we didn't know where the bottom was going to be on that, but fortunately we kept that academy going without too many hiccups. TECOL would not require us to, would not allow us to teach online in the Police Academy, so we had to come up with, they said, figure it out, come up with a way to teach the students. So we did, and we put them all back on campus, and then you know what happened after that. Everybody got the COVID, and then we were allowed to send everybody home and it was kind of like playing, I don't know, playing a game the kids would play. Send them home, they all got checked, they all tested, they would come back. We'd be back two days, somebody else would get COVID, everybody had to go home, stay out, so there was a lot of training. TECOL did allow us finally to do it, do it online as opposed to face-to-face as a temporary measure. That helped us out tremendously, and then as the COVID passed a little bit, we have a better protocol for that now than we had in the past. If somebody gets positive for COVID, they go home, everybody else stays here, and we deal with it on an individual basis, so that's, that's worked out much better. So you can see in twenty-one, twenty-two there, the numbers are coming back up a little bit. We had twenty-two in the Alpha, that's a night course just started in January, and we have a new academy starting April twelfth, and we have twelve enrollments in that already. If you know anybody that is interested in a career, send them our way. Enrollment is still open on that, and I'll make, I'll make a point here that in the old days, the X-BPOC was for non-sponsored cadets. Those were people that wanted to become police officers, whether in the military or they had a full-time job, so they would come to the academy at night. When they completed that one-year program, they'd graduate, take the TECOL exam, and they were available to work, so they could go to work with that training that they had received. Now we have allowed sponsored, those are ones hired by police departments, and non-sponsors to be in both the academy and night academy, and sponsor can also be in the night academy, but we don't have that separation anymore. So I think we're going to see the numbers come back up. We have a, an advisory board meeting, we had it scheduled for tomorrow, but things happened. We're going to have it next week, so we'll hear some update, give them some update on the numbers as well. They are the ones that decided how many we, how many students we need to have in a class, and we're going to talk about that next week when we have our meeting. A couple of initiatives here, I'll go with these pretty quickly. OERs, OERs, those are Open Educational Resources. I remember when we, I first heard that term and I said, who came up with this plan? I won't tell you what other word I said. So we got on board with that, and in my department, we have five courses that we have converted to OERs. I was opposed to that greatly at the beginning, but the five courses we have, three of them are outstanding, two of those need to be revamped, but it was experimental at the time we did it, and we have had great success with that. Students do like the fact that, it was, on the first day of class, they would say, where do I buy a book? How much is a book? And, no, they don't have to ask that, so we have courses where they can just log into the course, take the course, don't have to worry about that. I think our number for OERs is up to about seventy, is that correct? I think we have surpassed the OER offerings of University of Maryland. They only have sixty-one or sixty-two, I believe, so we are far ahead, we are putting University of Maryland in their place where they belong. All right, early college high school, I was opposed to this as well. One of my faculty members, Scott Loren, said, came to me in twenty-twenty-two and he said, why don't we get involved in that? And I said, God bless you, Scott, why don't you take the day off? And we talked about it and we, he said, I'll try it, let me see what happens. He tried it, we had a lot of interest in it from the students in KISD. We just, we're talking this morning about adding more courses to that and hopefully one day be able to offer a degree in criminal justice to those kids in ECHS because that's really what they need. They don't need, they come here for that degree and that is really what they need to leave here with. So I'm going to say that in the short two years that we've done that, I think that's a very successful program. University transfer, as I mentioned before, our degrees transferred to University of Texas, Central Texas, and many, many others, other campuses, transparent to the student, there is nothing they have to do. We offer the FOS courses, field of study courses, they accept them without any question, they know that the students are well-based in the education. based in the education from CTC, and they have even, you know, many times told me, uh, you students are always well-prepared, uh, to come to us at this level. So we're, we will continue that, and we have pathways with many other universities as well. Uh, partnering with Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas, as you know, I don't know if you've been over there to visit, they, on the fourth floor of the founders hall, they have their development research, uh, program, I'm not sure what they call it, but, uh, part of that R and D is in digital forensics. And Scott Lorenz, who I've mentioned two or three times now already, uh, you might know that he is a, uh, he is involved with, uh, Texas A&amp;M doing, uh, digital forensics research, and, uh, that gives us a good tie between us and, and, uh, Texas A&amp;M. Uh, they are very pleased with the work he's done over there and very happy to be able to be part of that program. Uh, if anybody would like to take a tour of their facility over there, uh, contact me, I know that Scott can give tours over there. Uh, he has an office over there at A&amp;M as well, so, uh, if you'd like to go over there and take a look, I could just sneak you in over there. All right, uh, a couple of things that have gone on in the police academy. Done some certifications, uh, training, uh, now that pandemic has kinda settled down, so we've, uh, the staff has gone through a course called Threat Pattern Recognition Instructor Course, so they go take that and then they come back and train other people that teach for us, uh, once they got that instructor designation. Uh, Cliff Osborne, the director of the police academy, went to the ground fighting school. You know Cliff? Cliff is, uh, almost as old as I am, but not quite, and he went to that school, that was three weeks ago that he came back, and he is still recovering, he's acting like an old man. He said it really kicked his, uh, butt. So, he said, we need to hire some younger people, and I said, okay, as soon as I retire, you can hire some young people and get them to go to those classes. Uh, Cliff will also be going to the mandatory, uh, TECO conference, that's in October of every year, uh, they did not have it due to the pandemic, so there'll be a lot of catch-up to do there. And then we have another, uh, officer going to, uh, another instructor going to, uh, teaching scenarios and tactics for field training officers, uh, and here we go with that, uh, hopefully next week. Uh, well, while talking about the police academy, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Mark Harson, uh, and his crew out there at facilities for, uh, the work they've done on the range. If you've been out there, they have improved that tremendously, they put in some new lanes of, uh, fire in there, they put in some, uh, permanent target bases for us, uh, they leveled out all the ground clear, so that we could walk with that driven and, uh, ground is not full of mud holes, and, uh, uh, we do appreciate that, I mean, that's, uh, that they do a lot of hard work. And so, uh, they have also increased the size of the berm, they added dirt to the berm down there, so for those who, you know, you will never get those calls, if the bullets are going over the fork again. You all heard those stories, right? But you didn't believe them, because I did, you. All right, any questions or comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to check with, uh, John with, uh, what you said about the COVID. Uh, for the board to know, that was, uh, a time when we had to do some interventions, so my contact with, uh, with, uh, Brad Buckley and the coordinating board, uh, to do that intervention to get, to get TECO to turn loose of that and let, allow John to teach those classes online, and so they finally come to, if you see Brad, please thank him for that, that was, that was tremendous. Uh, on the OERs, uh, John mentioned that, uh, I, a friend of mine who was the president of Tex, uh, University of Maryland and the vice president were both friends of mine at the time, and they had to start developing OERs, and they were pretty successful at what they were doing. And I asked them for some help, and so, uh, not only they provided us the help, they actually came here twice at no expense to us to help our faculty to get started on it, so, uh, anyway, if you ever see those folks, tell them thank you.
And I do appreciate, and I know everybody does, uh, COVID was not an easy thing to go through. Uh, it was easy to send the, the recent students home and then tell them, okay, hook up on the Zoom meeting, but we, we had class, we have four academies a day, a year or so, uh, at any time, we have three academies going, and what do you do with, what do you do with sixty students? Uh, they're all, the majority of them are getting paid by an agency, and the agency does not want them to sit at home. Uh, they're paid to come to school here, and every time that they don't come to school here, we have to account for that. So I do appreciate the, uh, help, the assistance, uh, the government's office was involved, TECO was involved, uh, chiefs of police were involved, uh, and every day, things were changing, and it was, like, which way are we going today? And I thought we would never get over that, but, you know, like, though, everything else, it all came out in the end, all worked out perfectly, and we're back on the rise again, so, uh.
Not a, not a question, but just a comment. I appreciate the fact that you, uh, became flexible. You didn't approach it just, you know, initially, uh, some of the challenges that you were faced with, but you recognized that they were necessary, and obviously you were successful, so I have an appreciation for an open mind and a, and an approach to do what's best for the students, so, because it's unique to, uh, probably every educator at every level in the, in this, in the United States, or in the world at, at this point, to find things that they don't necessarily want to do or know how to do, but you know it's best for the, for the whole, and so I have a great appreciation for your willingness to learn, to be flexible. So thank you for doing that.
I don't think it was, uh, I can't take all credit for that, because, like I said, everything changed, it was constant change, we'd never been to a pandemic before, we, okay, we might get the flu and, you know, a couple of students get sick, we can handle that, but when everybody in the, in the, in the area is sick and, you know, we didn't know, a student left, were they gonna ever come back, were they gonna die from COVID or, uh, I mean, every day was, uh, Dr. Lee used to give me well-known formula, he had a level of five in nineteen, seven thirty-four. Uh, and, uh, I mean, it had to be a group effort, it was certainly not easy to do, so a lot of people deserve credit for that. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I was glad to see that we made some inroads into our high school, uh, for teaching, uh, police work, so, and back several years ago, I, I'm not as close to the young people as I used to be, but, uh, they really looked up to policemen and, uh, law enforcement and wanted to, you know, get more acquainted with them.
Yes.
Are we doing some outreach, uh, to encourage them that, look, we got good people and we need more?
Well, we try, we try, we try to get that message out there every day. Now, I'll tell you one thing I did, we've got things that have been very helpful in both filling the police academy and getting students into our degree program, uh, one is having ECHS students here on campus. Most of them, they, they don't know anything about police, they, they wonder parents own, that's what they know about police, when they have good parents, they've got a good education, if they don't have good parents, they've got poor education. Uh, I did hire, uh, well, I'll show you the slides on the degrees, KISC had two, uh, dual-credit instructors, both with correction backgrounds. They were teaching classes at the KISC. Uh, Joe Easley, Dr. Joe Easley, uh, some of you know him, and, uh, Jimmy Hammond, outstanding instructors. And, uh, I thought, what a good, they, they have a lot of students, but we don't see them, where are their students? Where, where do they go? So, I called them both up and I said, hey, I'm going to open two corrections, uh, adjunct positions in the college, and if you would like to apply for them, feel free to do so. They did, oh my God, they have turned out to be a blessing, because they bring their students with them, and in fact, in the summer, we're getting more face-to-face classes. Both Joe Easley and Jimmy Hammond will be teaching in the classroom, while they're off of the, uh, uh, KISC, so they will have enough, they bring those students from outside of the school year, from right here on the campus, teach, they're gonna teach in the evening, and, uh, I can see our numbers going up, so.
Good.
I think that's, that's good for our group, and I think it's good to keep that transition, because when we get done with the corrections, they'll probably have to take some CJ classes and might even go to the police academy, so.
Good.
Yeah, I'm glad that's what we have.
Just remind me, if I were not in Florida, would we only offer fire protection in Europe?
That's the fire protection, that is, uh, that was started years and years ago. I don't know if anybody in this room was here at the time when that started, and I can't even remember the date, I remember conversations about that in nineteen ninety-five. Um, so I know a predate in nineteen ninety-five, uh, I came to work here as an adjunct in nineteen ninety-six, and, uh, I asked that question myself. Part of the, part of the answer to that is that we wanted to have a fire program here in Texas, could not do that without having a full-time coordinator like we have for the police academy, we could teach, they would approve us to teach outside the state of Texas, we were military contracts, I'm sure, at that time, went to Europe. And then we only kept their certificate, because we were not offering a degree, and that was part of that catch on that, so we offered twelve hours, and we have carried that on the books forever and ever. And we get a few enrollments, the good thing about it is that we have soldiers that are here and they take the twelve hours, when they go to Europe, Spain, Germany, wherever, they can build on that, they can take those twelve hours they've already gotten here and they can work on that degree over there. Uh, that was very, very successful, in my eyes, that we turned out a lot of graduates from that, from that program.
But right now, we don't have some of them in Europe.
Yeah, well, that, that's the problem.
We're still offering degree programs.
We still have that degree program there, and Jean and I, in fact, we've had a, we've had a exploratory meeting on that to see if we can keep that program going and keep that, uh, enrollments up, that, they have the desire, they, they have the, uh, they, they want to keep that program going, and I would like to have them to keep that program going as well. But that has to do with drug and contracts, so.
There's a lot of nuances in, involved in that. Uh, that program was primarily set up in, in Europe, it was part of the contract, and it was in the contract, and if we bid the contract, we had to bid that program. We didn't have that program here necessarily. At the time, we had a, we had a program here, and it was housed at the Colleen Fire Department down on Avenue D. And, uh, that, all that got dismantled along the way, and Colleen changed the way they were doing things, and the city of Colleen took over that, all that firefighting, uh, equipment and moved out to Conder Park, and they built that facility out there. We didn't have that kind of a facility here, and we really didn't have, at that time, we didn't have the need, we didn't have the number of students, but it was in the contract, and we bid the contract, so we had to do it, so we had to maintain a department or a liaison here for that, for the curriculum. Uh, the curriculum is actually a curriculum that is run by the, by Texas A&amp;M University and College Station. So the instructor in Europe at the, and it's usually at the, at the Air Force bases where they need the fire protection for the, uh, if planes crash and that kind of thing, they, so that's where they get the training, but those books, those, those materials, that instructor comes back once a year and goes through the, an upgrade at the university, at Texas A&amp;M University, so, uh, that's kind, I mean, there's a lot of other nuances involved in that, but, but, but it's part of our contract and we have to maintain it. At one, at, at one time, we had the same problem in the Far East, Bill, you remember, we had aviation, uh, maintenance of courses, and we had to, we had to maintain that here, even though we didn't teach that here, uh, because of the contract, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shaw, appreciate it. Any other questions? I'd very feel, like, to come and visit our facility up there on top of the hill, uh, where everyone resides, nice and weekend suit, and, uh, feel free to come up there if you'd like. And, uh, I would like to make one other comment, and that is that in a previous meeting, uh, another chancellor had mentioned that, uh, he had commented on graduations in the academy and the police academy as well, and, uh, uh, I do thank you for attending those graduations at the police academy, we have four of those every year, and the students always do appreciate, uh, you know, the best support, they feel that support, and, uh, that helps the program as much as anything, to know that they, you know, that they have recognized, and, uh, you know, we, everybody knows that they are there and they are graduating. Again, I encourage you, anytime you can, uh, attend one of those, we would appreciate our students, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, I did not mean to take so much time, uh, I think I was told I could have three minutes, I have three minutes, uh, time, so, uh, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, John.
The last item is, uh, what's your calling, Port?
Chief Bergen? You better attend those graduations, board members, because when a police officer pulls you over for speeding, he'll recognize you.
So, good afternoon, uh, Chair Weaver, Chancellor Yanopoulos and distinguished board members. So my name's Joe Baragon, I have to tell you my name, because the other day I was actually working here at the college and, uh, one of the employees from the facility thought I was a custodial worker, so it's just a joke, okay? So it was fun, though, I mean, because I actually was helping clean up the mess here and everything, but it was, it was all done with grace, and, but I just say that, I'm gonna take more than Mr. Chella took, okay? More time, I'm just joking. So, uh, I submitted a racial profiling report to the board members. According to the Texas Court of Criminal, uh, Procedure, it requires the annual reporting to the local governing body of collected, uh, information on motor vehicle stops, that's every traffic stop that we do, in which a ticket, a citation or warning was issued, and to the arrest made as a result of those stops. In addition, we had to do an analysis of all that material, all the data that we, uh, had in the citations and the information that we received. So based on that, on your executive summary report, there were some things that were revealed, one of them is that our department has adopted a detailed written policy on racial profiling, and that would be your appendix A in the report. Second, officers of the police department are in full compliance, having received the training and education on racial profiling in accordance with Texas law and Central Texas college policy. As Mr. Chella said, there's a lot of new mandates, a lot of new training and de-escalation, um, uh, uh, confliction, uh, training that we have to do with our officers, and they are getting that training. Third, we, our police department is also in compliance with the law on racial profiling, the complaint process, so, uh, when we stop a, a motorist, uh, they have to know how to file a complaint. So on the citation, they actually have a QR code that they can scan and make the complaint. To myself, uh, policy also allows that any, uh, CTC, um, member can also, uh, file a complaint. I also provided the link in your, in the report, we have a link that we actually give them, um, that's, uh, so we can make sure that that's being, uh, educated, the public education of, uh, individuals knowing what they can do, they have a complaint on any of my officers. Um, we also have, uh, just, just during new student orientation, we also let them know about the complaint process. As a matter of fact, I do tell, uh, the students that if they get one ticket, they can come to me and I'll give them a verbal warning after I talk to them. Uh, so they, they understand that that's gonna happen, you know, and I'm, I'm a little graceful when it comes to citations, you'll see that with the, the way the stats are, but, um, the good news is we received no complaints for twenty twenty-one. So, and then the other thing that I wanted to cover is that the police department has met all the requirements, and we did a comparative analysis of all the, uh, data that we received, and my conclusion was it did not- and my conclusion was it did not reveal any disproportionate variable related to racial bias-based profiling. We were consistent with the population, and, uh, of course, there's always those, uh, dynamics, how you measure things, but right now, we had to measure with a population, uh, I, I wish we had the matrices where we can measure how many drivers in the, in the state of Texas versus the ethnic breakdowns, that would help us a lot to be a little more accurate. But, uh, in appendix B, uh, this is the report that we submitted to T-CO, we had a total of two hundred and fifteen stops. This is a decline of twenty-seven percent from the previous year, I like to say, 'cause maybe because of COVID, and I'm short staff and things like that, but we, we, it was a twenty-seven percent decrease. We, of the two hundred and fifteen stops, ninety-three were females, and a hundred and twenty-two were males. When we break it down by race and ethnicity, well, seventy-nine were black, which is thirty-six point seven four percent. Ten were Asian Pacific Islander, or four point six five percent. Ninety-one were white, which were forty-two point thirty-three percent of the average, and then Hispanics were, we stopped thirty-five, which is sixteen point two eight. So, the reason for the stop, a hundred and seventy-five motorists were stopped for a moving traffic violation, that means they were speeding, they ran a stop sign, uh, they didn't come to a complete stop sign, um, so they were stopped for a moving violation. That's a hundred and seventy-five people were stopped for moving violations, eighty-one percent. And then others were stopped for just a vehicle traffic violation, which could be expired motor vehicle inspection, uh, defective equipment like no brake lights and things like that. Only thirty-six were stopped, that's sixteen point seven four percent. Of, of the stops, of the two hundred and fifteen stops, the results of those stops is a hundred and sixty-one of them, seventy-four point eight eight, received a verbal warning, a correction, written warning, um, they received a written warning. So, uh, overall, seventy-five percent, uh, that, that shows you where I, I'd rather educate, I'd rather help them out, and hopefully they don't, and we do keep tabs of everybody that we stop, so, you know, one of, we did that one time, we found out that one person had already been stopped three times, and I said, "That's it, no more, no more written warnings, we have to give them a citation," 'cause obviously the education, prevention didn't work. Fifty-three got citations, which was twenty-four point six five, and we made one arrest, uh, and that arrest, of all the two hundred and fifteen stops, um, but that arrest, nothing, none of the stops resulted in any bodily injury or any physical force. So, uh, this concludes my summary presentation, uh, any questions? Yes, sir.
The, the statistic that you, uh, revealed there, that's just, uh, on campus, right?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, uh, interface with other, uh, police forces around here to indicate how our statistics marry up with theirs?
So, yes, we do, and, and what I do is I do, uh, the analysis of what Colleen Police Department does, and, but they have to publish reports, they publish their reports in a manual report, so we actually do better than they do, uh, because sometimes they, their numbers, uh, may be higher on a certain, uh, ethnic group, right? Like, for example, like, like, uh, there was more Hispanics stopped, which is, was not proportioned to the population, so, things like that, so, we do look at that, but again, that and it's, the face value, how many people you stop for, it, it's not indicative of any racial profiling, it's just, i- i- if you look in KPD, you might have people getting in trouble, and they're in displaced neighborhoods that, that you would stop.
Well, my experience indicates that you all are doing a great job, because people seem to be, you know, uh, obeying the law here on campus, and, and I attribute some of that to, uh, your, uh, education of giving a warning, and, uh, so I think you're doing a great job there.
Thank you, sir.
So, this has been bugging me all weekend, 'cause I studied this, and, uh, it's really detailed, but, uh, it was one search, uh, three searches conducted, and, uh, reason for search was consent, probably caused one incident to arrest, but, uh, when you look down here, in, uh, number ten, it says arrest was zero, but in ten-four, it said written warning and arrest, is that the one that you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Now-
So, so rather than giving them a, we gave them a written warning and make the arrest, so that's why it's categorized as an arrest.
Okay, uh, so, but it, other, I guess it resulted in there was contraband there, but it says, if it's not drugs, or currency, or weapons, or alcohol, or stolen property, I mean, I don't think, I, I can't figure out what else there would be that would lead to an arrest, uh, after all those other categories.
So, i- i- let me clarify a, a little bit, the, the arrest was because of a violation of the law, he had a warrant, a criminal warrant for his arrest. The search revealed that he did have contraband, and that contraband item was actually, um, a placard, a handicap placard, that was not his.
Okay.
So, it was seized, but he was not arrested for that, he, the, the rest was for-
For outstanding-
Having a criminal warrant.
Right, okay. Yeah, that, and that's really good, 'cause, you know, people do abuse us, too, that's good, and people don't know that's against the law, anyway, uh, but ignorance is, is not an excuse.
A- and, and, uh, I'm glad you reminded me, uh, if you have a DV plate, you need the placard now, so, i- i- we're, we're doing a lot of education on that, too, so do not park in handicap, uh, unless you have a placard, if you have DV plates, or, again, we're doing that education part on that, too. We give them a warning and let them know, and, uh, we give them a campus citation, so they can come talk to us, and we'll tell them about the prevention part of it, the education part of it.
Well, tell your officers thanks for all the hard work they do.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Chief, thank you for keeping us legal and, uh, within the, uh, the, the codes for, uh, the state and the nation, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chancellor.
I think it's quite remarkable that your statistics and racial profiling, which tells me that there is no racial profiling offered within the statute of law.
Yes, sir.
That's what I gather from reading the report, and I think that's good.
Well, thank you, General Weaver.
Great, Chief.
Thank you, God bless you all.
Thanks.
Item number seven on agenda is the proposed budget, uh, I know this is probably a little bit early in the season, but we're really not on the standpoint, and we've got to put the budget together here pretty soon, so we've been thinking about this, and, and I was, I talked about it, so we're gonna give us some points of consideration that we're going for.
Yes, sir. Before I get started, Chief, does that warning apply to staff members as well? I, I should have one on the books then, that I'm okay, okay? I just wanna make sure. As I normally do when I discuss these items, we got a lot of stuff to talk about here, so at any time, if you have a question, please, uh, ask it while we're going, um, and we'll, uh, it might open up more dialogue. As General Weaver had stated, you know, we've, we've ta- started talking about this budget probably the same meeting we talked about the budget when we approved it last year in August, because we knew that this would probably be a, a tough budget to put together based upon where things were going and, and the direction they were moving. I'm glad to hear from two department chairs at least, that both of them, that I've worked with for a long time, and, um, you should be able to tell by what you've heard and the way they both spoke, that they normally, they shoot straight, and you normally can trust what they say, so I'm hoping that the number's going up from your lips, uh, straight up, because we haven't seen that happen for a while, but we definitely need to see a turnaround with those numbers. So, I've, I've got the major topics in that handout that I, that I put on your, uh, desk before we started the meeting, and these are the major things we talk about at the early stages of the budget, and things that we've been thinking about for already, you know, since, since last budget was approved. The first two items, pretty quick, appropriations and benefits, both major items, but we're in the second year of the biennium, appropriations rarely change from one year to the next of the biennium unless something drastic has happened, and that hasn't happened, so we feel pretty confident that we know that number will be the same as last year. And then for benefits, the only change that we are certain of at this moment is, and I know that said employee, but it, that's, that's a Bob Liberty fat finger typo there, the, the cost to the college for employees that are on TRS is gonna go from seven point seven percent of salary to eight percent of salary, um, which is a change of about eighty thousand dollars. So, pretty minor items right there, thank goodness, um, there are some years that benefits have major effect, uh, in appropriations, as we all know, um, in the last several years, the number of fourteen point five million, that's nice to know that that's the same as what it is in the current year, but I can remember years when we used to get twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars in appropriations, so, uh, a big drop from that, but at least, uh, we know that we're not going to have any decrease from last year to this year. The only thing we're not certain of currently, um, and it's way too early for them to have that information, is what might happen potentially with the cost of our health insurance. We've been so fortunate, for about four years in a row now, health insurance has not gone up, um, that is great, um, we do receive appropriations from the state for half the cost of the health insurance, and if the trend continues, there shouldn't be any additional cost next year from this year, um, so, so that should be good. Those are items that, uh, in the first year of the biennium are much more critical than they are in the second year. Next item you see on the list is taxes, which, um, it's almost a dirty word, I know none of us like to talk about taxes, and I'm certain none of us like to pay taxes, um, but we are a taxing entity, and, and taxes are a big part of what we do, it's becoming a bigger part every year, um, as state appropriations go down and enrollments have gone down, the taxes have become a bigger piece of our total budget. We've done a great job in the thirty-two or three budgets that I've done now, since I've, since I've been here, um, that, you know, we, we don't raise taxes, uh, very often, it, it has only happened several times, less than two or three in the last thirty-something years. In the current market, the information that I got when I was digging around the county website and looking at some reports and studies that have been done, it appears that in the current year, s- the median sales price of a home in Bell County is up twenty-two percent. So, if the median sale price of homes are up twenty-two percent, that's pretty much gonna tell you that appropriate, y- your, your appraisals are gonna go up. Now, obviously, they're not gonna go up by twenty-two percent, because many of those homes are homestead, and there's a maximum cap that, that you're allowed to add, which is ten percent, but those that aren't are probably gonna go up by that number, or more. So, we're, I would be stunned, more than any other time I've ever worked at the college about anything, is if our appropriations, our appropriations, hello, if our appraised value of the district did not go up, probably double digits. Last year, it went up almost eight percent, and this year, the sales are so much higher than they were last year, i- it would astound me. So, what that means is there's gonna be a lot, much larger base, and those of you on the board know that the way taxes work, after the appraisals all come in and they come up with a new valuation, there's a calculation that is made, that's called a no-new revenue rate. That basically will generate the same amount of tax dollars in the next year as it did in the current year. That's the rate that the college almost always adopts, we have, we have almost made it a practice to, to adopt that rate. Basically, what it does, you know, if, if, if your house, um, doesn't appraise for any more dollars, your tax amount will actually go down, but if your house does go up, your rate should stay the same, because we're gonna reduce the rate by the amount, so technically no-new revenue. Based upon the way these numbers are right now, i- it would surprise me, we're currently at point one 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 six per hundred dollar valuation. My guess is that no-new revenue rate is probably gonna be closer to point one zero. It's, it's gonna go down probably ten percent neighborhood, based upon everything that's happening. Even with it going down, if we were to adopt that number, and it's way too early to make a recommendation, it's way too early to know what these numbers are, because I don't, haven't even seen preliminary numbers, it's several months away from seeing preliminary numbers, the college will probably still generate a little over three hundred thousand dollars because of the new property that was added to the tax rolls that weren't on the rolls last year, so we'll be able to collect the tax on those. So presently, the recommendation and how we're gonna start building the budget is assuming that we're gonna go with the no-new revenue rate, which means the only increase that we will see in the tax base is based upon the new property that was added in the tax year. So, what that will do, at least for Central Texas colleges, we will lower our tax rate once again, that'll be the recommendation that we'll make to the board, based upon everything we know today. It will probably be, normally it's early May, that they'll have a preliminary meeting at Bell County, where they have a pretty good estimate of what the tax levy will be, it's prior to all the appeals coming through, but they have, they'll have a pretty good guess, and at that time, what I, the only thing that really is important to me at that meeting is to know the value of the new property was added, because that is the only property that we'll actually receive tax benefit from, if we choose to go with the no-new revenue rate. So, at the present time, what I'm saying is, as all these things are in, in hopes of balancing the budget, which has always been the goal as long as I've been here, we're currently, the administration is hoping that we'll be able to make the recommendation to adopt the no-new revenue rate, which will actually lower our tax rate. If you'll remember, we did that last year, but not every entity in our local area did that, some of them lowered it by part of the difference between the no-new revenue rate, um, there was actually an increase or two, but, um, we, uh, we did not, and hopefully we will be able to hold that off again. But we currently collect about thirteen and a half million dollars a year in taxes from, from the surrounding area, uh, which represents about thirteen percent of our total budget. When I first started working at the colleges, about four and a half percent, and it's not that we're actually collecting much more tax revenue, it's just that all of our other sources of revenue are getting smaller, which is why that number's going up. So, that's, uh, that's the tax, the tax piece that we're looking at. Next major source of revenue that we have here, we talked about appropriation, we talked about taxes, the next one is tuition. About, about three or four weeks ago, there was a, there was a semi-annual meeting of the CFOs of all the community colleges, and at that meeting, there were some survey questions that, that went out, um, and one of them was related to what did everybody, what was gonna happen in their district related to tuition? Seventeen people there, without a doubt, said their tuition rate was gonna go up. About another ten or fifteen community colleges said it was a little early, but their guess was it was gonna go up, the rest of them either didn't have an idea or said it would stay the same. Currently, as it stands right now, the average tuition and fee rate per semester credit hour for in-district tuition in the state of Texas is a hundred and ten dollars. That is the average across the state, we're at ninety-five, so we're fifteen dollars below the average. That's one of the averages that I'm always happy to be below, that, that's a nice one. Most other ones you wanna be above average, um, but this is one that it's, that it's nice to be below average. However, with that being said, General Weaver and I actually, uh, were talking at lunch today, and we had several things, a discussion that we talked about, and, you know, gas prices came up, and we talked about how gas prices in turn, everything is more expensive because the cost of gas is more expensive, and, uh, some of the items that General Weaver shared with me that he ran into at HEB, uh, last week were astronomical, how much higher they were than what he's used to pay for that. With that being said, the administration is gonna recommend that the board approves a five dollar per semester credit hour for in-district and out-of-district tuition, and two dollars for non-resident, and I know you asked why only two for non-resident, we're currently at two forty-eight for non-resident. Two fifty is the cap that the military will pay, so there's really not much sense going above that amount, because normally the, we don't have a lot of non-residents, but the majority of ones that we have are military-related, and they're not gonna pay it, so, uh, it, it just, it just, um, it would, it defeats the purpose to have that rate, 'cause the military, if you have a student now who's full-time military, and you tell them that the rate went to two fifty-five, and the government's gonna pay for all of it except five dollars, they're not- five dollars, they're not going to take the class. End of story. They're not going to pay. So, our recommendation is to go to one hundred, one twenty-four, and two fifty would be in-district, out-of-district, non-resident. That's an increase of four point seven percent, which is well below the Consumer Price Index increase. I actually looked back to what the Consumer Price Index was the month prior to the pandemic through February of this year. And that increase in those two years is nine point seven percent. This would be an increase of four point seven percent, and we haven't raised tuition since August of twenty-twenty, so I think it's well warranted, this five-dollar increase. And it will generate approximately six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of additional revenue for the college, which we are going to need, that additional revenue, as well as the tax revenue increase from the new property, to cover all of our increased expenditures. You know, you think about everything that, that we're doing on campus, and one item we're not going to discuss here, but I did have a discussion with Dr. Adi about it, and it will be presented to you at a future meeting, and that's differential tuition and flight fees. You know, besides the maintenance on that airplane, which, that's not getting any cheaper because parts are getting more expensive, those planes run on fuel, and the cost of fuel is going up. You know, John will tell you, in all the years that he's been here, bullets any cheaper than they were twenty years ago, John? Boy, we know they're not. I, I remember your budget, how it has gone up astronomically over the years, and ninety-five percent of it's related to cost of ammunition. That's going to continue. So, this additional revenue that we're going to generate here will, will be enough to help stem off the additional costs that we're going to have, and that we anticipate due to the inflationary cycle that we're going through in our economy. When you run into that next piece now, the number one biggest expense that the college has is salary and benefits. If everybody will remember, last year was the largest increase the college ever had in the thirty-two years that I've been here, and I can't believe there was ever one bigger than that before then. But we increased the pay scales by eight percent, and we also gave a two and a half percent one-step increase to every employee that was eligible. That's tell, ten and a half percent. That was great. Do I think it's everything that we needed to do to be one-hundred percent competitive with everybody out there and to take care of all of our employees related to these additional costs? No, I don't. However, do I think we can afford to give another increase under the current situation that we're in, where we've had enrollments just this year alone have declined approximately ten percent compared to last year? The year prior to that, it was twenty percent. Year prior to that, it was double digits as well. The college, I don't believe, can afford to give a pay increase whatsoever this year. But thank goodness, it was ten and a half percent last year, and it, and as I said earlier, February prior to the pandemic to this February, cost of living's up nine point seven percent. So, at least that increase went a long way to taking care of the difference between that now. A one-step increase, which is two and a half percent, has a cost of a little over a million dollars to the college. So, if we want to balance the budget, the only way that we, I mean, we've got to come up with other sources of revenue, or get our tuition back through enrollments, to come up with those additional amounts. We have, in the past, potentially discussed, potentially having a mid-year increase, and this would be something that, if we're in September timeframe, and the fall enrollments have bounced back up, finally hit the bottom, and the rubber ball has jumped to the top, and we're up eighteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, I, I will have no problem putting numbers together and come into the administration and saying, hey, listen, it's finally turned around like it's supposed to, maybe we can award a mid-year raise, but we've got to see it first. I, I have stood up here now for two solid years, and I can't tell you how many times I've said, well, maybe the worst is over and the numbers are going to turn around, but we haven't turned back to positive yet. And until that happens, I don't think the college can afford to spend those dollars when we don't have the revenue to cover it. The last piece, which is another major expense, and I get to look at my friend Mark Harmson over there when I say that, we, we are, we are going to recommend that we make no capital improvements, other than what's required by ADA. You all know we're in the middle of an ADA finding that we have to finish, and then items that are safety-concern related. Other than those, the recommendation and the way we're planning on building the budget is not to include any expenditure for any of those nice-to-have capital improvements, because we just can't afford to spend the dollars. So, that, putting all those things in place should allow us to bring a balanced budget to the board. That's our goal every year, and that's what we hope to accomplish. So, if anybody has any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Lurie?
I, I'd just like to tell Mr. Liberty that that was a good explanation of the, the situation we've got to work with, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your hard work, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I don't remember, eighth on agenda is the, the tape drive, the update, the CTC's automatic tape backup system, Mr. Lurie?
Good afternoon. Hope you're all doing well today. Hold on to your hats, we're going to talk about tape backup. Okay, so first off, I'll just talk a little bit about what we have. What we have is a robotic tape library, and that basically consists of three fairly large cabinets. Each one is about the size of two refrigerators back and back. And what that contains is space for about three to four hundred tapes, a robotic arm, and then the tape drives. And so, that robotic arm, it's the software that knows, if that arm goes and fetches the right tape, knows which drive to put it in, it's pretty cool. Works really well, very dependable. We currently have twenty-four of those tape drives, two are LTO-six, two, twelve are LTO-six, twelve are LTO-seven. And LTO just refers to a standard that IBM and Quantum and HP came up with about twenty-five years ago. So, that's what we have now. What we want to upgrade to, we want to replace those LTO-six drives with LTO-eights, and that's about four times the capacity as the LTO-sixes. It's about twice as fast to read to and write to them, build four times more data. And the critical thing here is to know that the existing LTO-six drives are about eight, eight years old. The sort of magic window for equipment for us is six to eight years. We usually, we usually try to get about that much out of our, our equipment if we can. Eights, you know, at the tail end of that, and we are starting to see a few more failures out of those. They're still covered under warranty, but, or under maintenance, rather. But it, it, it is time to go with some new drives, and there, there are various advantages to that. We can write to them quicker, store more data on them, we need fewer tapes ultimately, et cetera. And that is the cost of twelve new ones, a little under a hundred thousand dollars. It's a pretty cut-and-try choice, it seems like to me, but, you know, it is a budgeted item. The DIR contracts make it a lot easier to buy equipment, and those are negotiated by the vendors with the state. Those are a great help to us. Also, I would like to say, you know, just a little background on the way this works. We have about six hundred tapes in rotation altogether. Every day, there's a company from Austin called SafeSite that drives a van down here, and they bring us a, basically a suitcase full of the old tapes, the old tapes that are getting rotated back into the system. And they take the new tapes, the tapes with the freshest data on them, off-site to Austin, and those are stored securely. Those are encrypted, it's very safe. And I would also say that one of the beautiful things about a tape cartridge is it's not connected to the internet, right? You can't hack a tape in a, in a box somewhere. That's one of the most important things we do for data protection, to make sure that we have secure backups that are accessible at all times, safe, well-stored. That's one of our, you know, primary disaster recovery and data protection strategies. So, we've had that relationship with SafeSite for, for well over a decade, and they do a really good job. Anyhow, that's really the, the final slide there. Any questions? I'd be glad to, more than glad to answer. Yes, sir.
So, the existing, excuse me, the existing LTO-six and LTO-sevent, well, do you all just auction them off after everything's transitioned out?
Usually, what happens is there is some sort of rebate. IBM will reclaim them for a relatively small amount of money. If, if they, if IBM will not do that, we would auction them off. There's sort of a catch, right, with the, newer generations of drives will read older generations of tape for only so long, and so these new eight drives will read the six tapes, so that will ease our transition to the new setup. But we will ultimately take, you know, phase those six, LTO-six tapes out as well, rotate the ATN over a period of about six weeks, eight weeks. And the tapes really aren't worth anything.
So, in other words, in simple language, my eight-track characters just won't fit on a CD.
You know, it's not that far away, they're about half the size. But yeah, it's, you know, it's funny, it's, it's an old technology, right? Electromagnetic, magnetic tape, like you're talking about, it's been around for a long time. They continue to make very steady improvements in those. About every, every iteration of, of that LTO-tape, pretty much doubles in capacity and doubles in speed. And that's been the case for, for many, many years, kind of like Moore's Law used to be with transistors and integrated circuits, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Lurie? I assume this is your budget?
Yes, sir.
Make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Hyde, is the catalog director of syllabi management software. This is Gary Roberts.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'll apologize in advance, I had a bout of laryngitis last week, so my voice is coming and going. Also, you guys make me very nervous, so, you know, a bunch of rock stars here. I submitted a memo that I believe you received in your packets the previous week, but I did want to talk to you a little bit more about it and, and give you some highlights. And I promised Dr. Garrett I'd keep it to two slides, so that's why it's like packed slide here, I wanted to keep my promise to her. In my area, there are two departments, Institutional Effectiveness and Curriculum Program Support Services. Between those two departments, we manage pretty much about nine to ten major operations for the college, sort of behind the scenes. We like to refer, refer to it as where the magic happens. Three of those processes include the catalog, the curriculum itself, and the syllabi management. Right now, those three processes are all manual. They've been manual since the beginning, and it's worked for a very long time, but as of the last five, maybe three to five years now, with the large amounts of information that we're managing, it's becoming more and more difficult to stay on task with it and to keep up with it the way we need to. Particularly, the catalog itself, because it is done completely manual, it takes a great deal of time, a great deal of person hours, it's extensive in terms of how we keep all the information updated, how we store the information, how everyone is able to, across the institution, submit updates, and the process is very convoluted. The goal here today is to talk to you about an option that might help us to actually make those processes a little easier to handle and to make them more effective. I wanted to just point out some highlights from the memo that I submitted, that you'll see here. In addition to being very detailed and manual, we use currently some desktop management software, Excel spreadsheets, Adobe, things like that. We require contributions, like I said, across the institution, from Europe and all of our sites and locations, to update that information. Everything from policies to course data is done manually, and it's done across several master versions. So, a lot of the times, there's a lot of duplication, where we have to update one for the CNI catalog and another for the Texas catalog, and then we have to go back and track, then we have to share proofs amongst everyone, and so it really does take months to produce our catalog. In the past, our catalog could be produced in approximately three to four months, and so we start about six months out. As of late, it's been later and later that we're reaching publication because we're managing such a large volume of information. With regard to the curriculum itself, our curriculum review committee consists of faculty and staff across the institution, and the updates and information that the faculty submits goes through our e-form and e-tree process, but again, that process is also very manual and requires several people looking at it, doing research, checking with the coordinating board, making sure that all of the requests and updates that are being asked to be approved are actually meeting compliance requirements, and then coming back again, then finally having a meeting, voting on it, discussions, it goes on and on. Right now, our catalog, our curriculum pieces, as well as our syllabi, exist as static documents on the website and in SharePoint and other areas. These static documents can be accessed and looked at, but they not, they're not inter, they're not interactive. So, a lot of the time, students, community partners, as well as our compliance and accreditation agencies often require that we have this information available on our website, and when they go to the website, being able to access that information, to see it right away, to search it, to look for information, is sometimes difficult, because it's basically just scrolling through pages and pages of Adobe files, to look at the catalogs, look at the curriculum, to look at the syllabi. We believe that these processes, even though they happen sort of behind the scenes, they have a great impact on a lot of the different areas that the college is focused on, including recruitment, enrollment, compliance. Because this information has to be accessible, it has to be easy to navigate, it has to be up-to-date constantly, it's important that we look at new and improved ways to ensure that we're staying in compliance, that the information is timely and updated, but that also the user experience is positive, whether that's the students, prospective student, or current students looking for information in our catalog, our community partners trying to research information to set up articulation agreements and so forth. We know that that information needs to be generated in a timely manner, it needs to be relevant and reliable, and so we believe that using a more advanced digital method is actually the way to go in terms of improving our effectiveness and efficiency in this area. And so, today, CTC is requesting approval to purchase the Smart Catalog Curriculum Management System from the company known as Watermark Insights LLC, in accordance with the college's purchasing policy. In your memo that I submitted, I kind of highlighted a little bit of information about Watermark and why we chose them. A solicitation was issued, we received six vendor responses, we closely evaluated each one, and Watermark was the one who came closest to meeting all of our needs and all of the things that we requested. In addition to the software itself being fully integrated and digital across curriculum, catalog, and syllabi, they've also offered us a great package with regards to training, so that we ourselves will be able to manage and control that system on our own. It's cloud-based. It allows for timely and accurate updates across all three processes, meaning that when faculty and staff want to submit an update to the curriculum, it will go in digitally, and then, once it's approved by our CRC committee, it will automatically be updated in our catalog, rather than someone manually having to go in and update that across both catalogs. In addition to that, it streamlines the curriculum review approval process, which is currently done now using our e-forms process that kind of goes up and across and down. And it also reduces the catalog publication time and provides more effective archive and retrieval processes for the syllabi, which have to be maintained, posted on the web, and available for students and community partners and agencies at any time to review. All of these things support the college's compliance and state and accreditation processes, and we're hoping today that by presenting this information to you, to your consideration, we recommend approval to purchase Smart Catalog from Watermark. It's offered in a thirty-six-month subscription package, but that includes a base year of fifty-nine thousand and two option years, an estimated fifty thousand five hundred seventy-five, and for year two, fifty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight, but we also know that those two-year options are negotiable. The funding has been budgeted and is available at this time for this year's expense, pending your approval. Questions?
I just want to make a comment. I, I've always been impressed, I, I had no idea it was still done manually, because you guys have always done, even before, before I was on the board, other places I've been, been exposed to CTC, the product is always a quality product. It's very well-written, it's visually attractive. I had no idea that it was all done. That's amazing.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
You, you, they've always, I mean, there have been, there, I don't think, when I was working directly with the education system, I don't think there was ever an opportunity where I questioned or had to have somebody research to find out if there was contradiction. to find out if there was contradiction in, in the catalog. So, that's, I'm really, well, I'm grateful that you're here today to share that with us because I certainly had no idea that it was done manually.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. And we do work hard, our team is small but potent. A group, strong group of committed individuals who, you know, they often feel sort of like, you know, they're left out because they say, oh, well, people don't think that we support students, but we definitely support students. The students don't know it, it's a thankless job, so to speak, behind the scenes, because we're not in the classrooms. But the work that they do, they understand is important and has an impact. And it's important for the students to have access to that information in a timely manner, and so, they keep that at the forefront. So, thank you so much, we do appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Does our mainframe have the horsepower to run this?
Yes, absolutely. It is a cloud-based system, so that's the great thing about it. It actually is going to not be a burden on our IT staff. They've already kind of vetted it and looked at what's going to be responsible, what's, the responsibility is on their end. And because it's cloud-based, it'll be managed in a system that's separate from ours. It'll live in the cloud, will have full access and control over the information and data, but it won't have to live on our servers. But we can download the information and control that information at any time.
Do you think that the addition of this software will pay for itself in labor saving?
I absolutely do. I don't come before you guys very often, but when I do, it's absolutely necessary in my mind. We've been looking at software like this for the last three or four years. And we've vetted some agencies before this, and we still felt like, okay, we could handle this manually and make sure that we stay on top of it. But now, because of the volume of data and because of the information, we believe that it's something that definitely is necessary. It is taking us longer to produce the catalog. We are finding ourselves, despite your amazing comments, and thank you so much for that, we do realize that a lot of the times, there are some errors, and we have to kind of go back and retrace our steps. And because there are so many people involved in the manual process, and there's a proofing session, and a review session, and a back and forth, it makes it more complicated, we're kind of in our own way. And software like this is definitely going to pay for itself ultimately because it's going to allow us to not only be more effective in the way we're producing these operations, but it's also going to give us that time we need to focus in on those other eight or nine operations that our department is dealing with, that we feel sometimes kind of get put on the back burner. We have to put less energy into them because we're so focused on the importance of these three.
So, what do you propose that we use the time for that we will have saved? What are your plans for that?
Our plans are to put more time into the development of our strategic planning. Our office actually is over strategic planning and mission development. We also handle the articulation agreements for community partners. We handle the state licensing for all of our locations throughout the continental US and in Europe. And so, our energies need to be put into those areas to build up those partnerships, to put more attention and time into our community partners. There are a lot of opportunities that I believe come across our desk that we could possibly put more into and build up those relationships. There, our research area as well, we do all the research for the college, external and internal as well. And so, a lot of the time, when our faculty or our staff or departments ask for research or data, it takes us a little bit longer to get them what they need. The state data, of course, is a priority, so we have to jump in and put as much energy into that as possible to meet those deadlines. But then, these items here also become so important and they're, it's imperative that we make them on time. And so, having that extra time to put into those other areas, I think, is going to be a vast improvement. There are a lot of our departments in the student success area, student success and persistence, as well as student services, that are constantly reaching out to us for support to assist them in some of the projects and efforts that they would like to move forward to help with enrollments. But because we are limited in terms of staffing and time, a lot of the times, we give them the data, but we're not always able to sit down with them and help them go through it or look at ways to apply it. So, they're kind of out there on their own, taking that data and attempting to figure out ways to use it. But our staff is actually, our staff is actually made up of a lot of individuals who have really good backgrounds and insight into analyzing data and how to apply it. We just not have been, we have not been in a situation where we're able to really help those other departments and areas look at the data, analyze it, and find ways to apply it in order to support student success the way we could if we had the software.
Does this include a software package to help us over the bugs we're in, hit inevitably?
That's loaded. I say that it definitely has its merits in that area. I, I don't want to go on record and say absolutely, but I do believe in it. I, I, I do, yes, I think so.
Yes, sir.
Dean Roberts, first of all, I want to agree with Ms. Cooley's affirmation and appreciation for the work you've done through the years. And the way you've just answered those questions, you must have given to Mr. Hollinger ahead of time because she's prepared. But I have one question. I noticed that you had a number of choices and vendors, and I suspect you made the choice that you felt was best. But how could you pass on a horse-dog name? To me, that seems to be more current than all these ABC. The first two comments are the ones I want to make.
And honestly, I thought it was funny because the name is interesting, and it definitely caught our attention. They have a great product, like so many of the others, but for us, we made some serious demands with regards to training, access to our information, the management of the information. We also wanted an integrated system, and so, we put them through the wringer. And a lot of the vendors who submitted responses, they came close, but they weren't able to meet the demands that we needed. And so, horse-dog, as much as we love the name, they weren't cutting it.
Just reiterate, I guess I've been the stumbling block for the last three or four years in turning down this request for this, this sort of technology with Dr. Garrett and Dean Roberts. So, anyway, they, they have assured me, and, and there's some things that, that... We are asked all the time by different agencies to pull different things to produce, and it comes out of this catalog. So, this single catalog, when you start doing that, it's very difficult for her and her, what do you have, three or four staff members?
We're actually up to five now.
Five, wow, okay. Well, I've got, Bob, remind me, check on it. But, yeah, and anytime there's a change, if we make a single change, like to just tuition rate, it had, somebody has to go in and manually do all this stuff and redo it. This thing has to be published every year. The cost of those paper publications is huge. So, we're trying to do away with all of that that we can. I know that you were given a phone book today, a little, about this size, right? It's black and white, that's our, that's our CTC phone book. They used to be pretty big, they were color and so forth, but those were expensive, so I want the cheapest thing. We're always trying to find the, the most expedient way to do things with the less expense. So, hats off to you all for making this happen.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for a very good presentation.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me.
And this will be on next Tuesday to be voted on.
Yeah, what would that do, next time, is commit one point two million plus over three years?
No, no, sir.
That's not the cost of software, that doesn't include anything to do with training and help. It's been my experience, if your officers get excited about new technology, and every time you get new technology, new technicians.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand, sir.
One policy over, so.
Sir, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, not one point five million.
No, it's five hundred thousand.
No.
Fifty, yeah, five hundred thousand over three years.
No, sir. No, it's fifty-nine.
One, two, three, yeah.
Well, it's, it's fifty-nine.
Forty-six months, and then it goes over to, it's down to part of the reading, so it's all, five hundred and fifty thousand, and then?
Don't hire General Weaver to be one of your technicians.
The base year is fifty-nine thousand, and the software itself is actually forty-nine. And the additional ten thousand is for the training for all three programs.
Apparently, it's like one, I guess, a thousand.
So, does it come with training also?
Yes, absolutely. That was, that was part of our RFP, we were very specific about that. And that's why a lot of the other vendors did not end up making the cut. We specifically requested training as well as a specific, specifically assigned customer service person. We also have a customer care service person who's working, and they will be specifically assigned to CTC to train. And we have several system administrators within the college identified who, if this is approved, will serve as the system administrators for it.
And that would cover the entire term, all three terms?
It will cover the first year, the first year term, and part of the second year term. And it's for all three of those components. Because even though it's an integrated system and contains catalog, curriculum, and syllabi, we also have training set up for all three of those, those pieces.
But we would be set up with all the materials we'd need to train, because we know people move on from time to time from jobs. So, if you bring new employees in and old employees already left, you need some type of continuity. So, we would have all the documentation, be able to train new employees.
Yes, absolutely. And the training is actually going to involve six system administrators from the college, and they are across three different departments, so student services, my department, and student success. We've already identified the individuals who would be the ones who would participate and to learn that information. And then, they would also be able to train the trainer. It would be a train-to-trainer type situation.
You can be assured, she's had three deputies who have beat her up for all of these kinds of questions, so.
I was going to say, having a relationship with Dr. Garrett and knowing how particular she is, and having met you today, I'm confident that you guys have asked for everything you needed in this process. So, good job, thanks for educating us.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Carter as well. I see her over there, she's always kind of looking at me, so I'm like, like, I know, I know. So, thank you so much, yes, absolutely. All three deputy chancellors are excellent at providing the guidance that we need. And so, they made sure that we asked for all the things that we need, not just for now, but also in the future, to make sure that this is a system that's going to work for us.
Thank you, Dean Roberts.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
I'm Robert Kent, is the board member location. I ask that the board consider what's happened over the last three years. And when we approve project for building this building, I don't think anybody ever, we saw happening six, but difference between people shelter and shelter. We've got a board in that office, and we have a view. And a question came up in discussion with some of the trustees, why not, I'm going to go back using the boardroom. And so, this is your opportunity to choose six, what we should do, is what we're going to ask for is a vote under next meeting. So, why don't we go back to the boardroom?
My only observation is I don't know why we need to vote on it, we just need to decide and do it. But I'm in favor of moving back. What part?
You're in favor of what?
I'm in favor of some moving back into the boardroom.
Well, is there a question about that?
Yeah, I was trying to say, but I don't, I don't understand why it needs to be voted on.
Well, because we had a couple of board members who voted and said, no way, we can't do that. And a couple of board members said, I don't see why not. And so, you have to pay everybody in public meetings and get two cents, I appreciate you.
I support moving back into the auditorium, boardroom, almost like an auditorium sometimes. My only recommendation to, to tag on to that is when we, when I first came to the board in 2019, pre-COVID, I guess, we were meeting in that little room in the very back corner for workshops. But I would recommend that either we have the workshop also in the boardroom or keep the workshop out here. Because we have a lot of people who come to the workshop, and most of them are like briefings, but we don't always vote on those briefings, right? So, if we, if we need to entertain more people out here to make it easier for people to come and go, we can still have a workshop out here or in the boardroom, but not in that little bitty conference room in the back corner.
Let's go, Jay.
Well, I was one of, probably the only one, or one of the ones that said I did not initially want to move in. I don't have an issue with us moving back in, I have a choice now. I can either wear my mask if I'm uncomfortable or not. So, I am comfortable with moving back into the other room. I'm just going to take care of me, whatever that means to me. So, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm for it.
I'm for staying in here.
I'd like to move back.
I think, I think the administration did a great job in presenting information here, it's worked out nicely. And so, you know, I'd be in favor of staying in here. Going there, I'm going to show up in there.
Sir, I know, may I make a remark? I'd like to make a remark, addressing Mr. James's concern. If you decide to move back in there, we can, with the workshops, we can control that by having people wait outside. We don't have to pack it up and move in, we can rotate that, they can make their presentation and leave.
If we move back in there, I'm ready to invest, they would use it for workshops and for work. That's why it was designed for a starting, and it would be room was supposed to be for executive sessions. And it's not just set up for people to come and greet us, to be talking to the stuff around there. I brought this up before, and I put it down, it just doesn't make itself a professional presentation. People step over each other and elbow each other and get up to the microphone, and I don't think that's right. That's not treating the board as correct. These are professional people, and I'm treating you as a professional. As far as the board meeting goes and workshop goes, I'm all for going back to the room and resign, set up and group properly. There is a technical issue that's very drawn up, and I think we can overcome that, we know what has to be done before we have to fix it up. And as this broadcast stuff, that was not set up for, we can't, so it's a matter of doing.
That was, that was my question, I believe, General Weaver, about all of our audio, video back here about for our streaming and stuff, would, is that easily incorporated into the little room?
It may take a long, it's a secret, but this is doing. Any other discussion on that issue?
Well, I just got to say that I enjoy the fellowship and the camaraderie of everyone being here. You know, I feel more as if it's a team rather than them out there and us up here. Anyway, this was a good venue for what we had to do.
Okay, next on is the recommendation we talked about, Jim Allen, for how, so we can talk.
Thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing.
We did not have an executive session today, and then go along on the agenda, we are here.
Sir, I have, let me, one announcement. It's the, I believe that Ms. Havens has given you each a copy of the National Mounted Warfare Foundation's Homecoming for Heroes Gala, which is going to be on Saturday, April the twenty-third, from five-thirty to nine. If you could, take a look at that and let Ms. Havens know next week if you can attend or not attend. You can see the prices on here for individual or for that sponsorship table, so please let her know. Thank you.